...to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone for their attendance this evening. We call a meeting to order May 5th, 2015, 7:00.
Fisher Brown?
Here.
Spark?
Here.
Wyatt? Olson?
Here.
Mathela?
Here.
Gambino?
Here.
Brandt?
Here.
We have one, through the minutes please.
Mr. Mayor, I know that we make a motion that we approve the minutes from the previous meeting in the last meeting.
Second. May the seconded, call please.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Spark?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathela?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Brandt?
Aye.
I'll do a council payable, Councilor Gambino, Mr. Mayor, I know that we approve of council payable as received.
I'll sign that.
May the seconded, call please.
Spark?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathela?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Brandt?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I think we need to approve the executive session minutes, is that correct?
Um, but that wasn't included.
That was, I knew that was included.
I heard multiple.
Was it meetings or meetings, Joe?
Pardon me?
Um, we have exec- just meetings, so.
So, the executive session.
Do you want to make a motion for the executive session?
Yes, I wanted to know that to include the executive session as well.
Do you second that?
Uh, Spark?
Yes.
Okay, call please.
Olson?
We just, oh, yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathela?
Yes.
Gambino?
Yes.
Brandt?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Spark?
Yes.
All right, on the special orders, we have the Mrs. Evening, Sarah Morgan, from the Oregon Liquor Control Commission.
Thank you.
My name is Sarah Morgan, and I'm of Oregon Liquor Control Commission, and I appreciate you taking time this evening to hear some information I have to share with you about initial liquor licensing and also renewal applications for your district. Um, you guys are currently in your renewal district, um, your license year here is July 1st through June 3rd, and I'm not sure who it is in your city, but actually receive some renewal applications?
We receive them, they're presented to the city council.
Okay. And you've received your letter already this year?
Yeah.
Okay, and have you guys made any more?
Not yet.
Okay. Um, little background, I was asked to come here by my new licensing director, he's asking me to go around the state and talk with various cities and counties to try to explain what our processes are, what we can consider, uh, what we can consider for denial basis. Um, we were getting some feedback from cities and counties that they were a little frustrated with the process, that they would give a recommendation, and it felt like we would go ahead and grant the license anyway if somebody wanted to recommend a denial. Um, so I've tried to put together an information packet for you, and we'll go through it a little bit tonight, and then, um, on the left side of your packet, the colored sheets there are just some cheat sheets for you refer to in the future when you're looking at liquor licenses. Um, the orange sheet in your packet is a list of what we can consider for denial basis, um, and/or it's the basis that we go ahead and put a restriction on somebody's license. If that, any of those items might be applicable to a certain person, we can look at whether or not we can put restrictions on their license to overcome the denial basis. Um, to start, um, local governments were given the right to weigh in on liquor license application center renewals by statute 471-166. It's summarized on the purple sheet for you. And what 471-166 says is that OLCC may require applicants to come to the local government whenever they want to apply for a liquor license. And we wrote a rule that said that we do require at initial licensing, every single license applicant to come before the local government. Um, the same is not true at renewals, at renewal time, we only require four license types to come back to the local government each year to pay the fee, but you are welcome to weigh in on any license in your jurisdiction, even if they're not required to come before you each year, we still renew their license. So I just want to make sure that if you have problem premises in your area and you wanted to give us feedback, we certainly will consider that and act, just like we would on any of those that are required to come to you. Um, we process about sixteen hundred and fifty new outlet applications every single year in Oregon. Any that are applied for here in depot bay are handled out of our Newport office. Um, Frank Matzko, I'm not sure if anyone knows who he is, but he's a new inspector down in Newport, and he runs that office, he does both the licensing and the enforcement for this jurisdiction here. Um, at renewal time, we process thirteen thousand five hundred renewals annually, and so we split the state up into four districts, and that's why you guys are currently in District 3, so everybody in your area, their license goes from July through June. And so it falls within your budget here, most likely. And all renewals come through Portland, if there's ever an unfavorable from you guys from one of your locations, that would get kicked to your, the local office in Newport, where he's more familiar with the business and is likely already aware of the problems that are going on, and so it would be Frank that would do the investigation. Um, he would take your input on that, he would process it, and then, um, the business gets to continue to operate though, the entire time that investigation's happening, until they have a hearing, and then the judge makes the determination on whether or not they keep their license. Um, at both initial licensing and at renewal time, you have three options before you, you can either give a favorable recommendation, an unfavorable recommendation, or you can, um, ask for a time extension. If you have, uh, somebody that you think there might be something in their background, you're aware that maybe they've got some criminal history there, and you want to do more, um, investigation, you have the right to ask us for an additional forty-five days. But once you get the application, we have to hear back from you within those forty-five days, or we treat it as though you gave us a fit, um, excuse me, a favorable recommendation. Occasionally, there's, a person doesn't want to give a favorable or an unfavorable, and you can just stay neutral on a license, but know that we treat it as though it's a favorable if we don't hear back from you. Um, at initial licensing, if a person's first applying for their liquor license and they're buying a business that already existed, they qualify for a ninety day temporary authority while we do our investigation. So those businesses will be up and running, likely, um, during that entire time until we hear back from the local government. Um, so if you are to receive an application and you think that you have a reason to deny the license, it would be really in your best interest to contact the office immediately and let us know that you're considering an unfavorable, because if we think we have a denial basis, we will not grant that ninety day authority most often, because we don't want to give somebody a license just to turn around and take it away from them. Um, if it's a new outlet, the only type of application that qualifies for a ninety day temp authority is for an off premise of sales license. So that would be grocery stores, convenience stores, or just to-go sales from a, from a restaurant. Um, at renewal time, you have those exact same options before you, most often what happens is when the renewals are due, unless you have a reason that you want to give an unfavorable to somebody, the city councils typically sit quiet on those, and so we just treat them as though you gave a favorable when the sixty day time period is up. And so if there's somebody, again, that you want to consider giving an unfavorable to or that's causing problems in your city, don't wait for them to come and give their renewal, because if, they have until June 20th this year to renew with us, you only have till June 4th to get your recommendation into us. So if you think somebody's going to renew, or it's possible that they will, and you want to give a renewal recommendation, don't wait for them to do their piece before you give yours, because it might be too late for you to give that recommendation. Um, so as I've said, your license year is July through June, so you will always get that renewal list about the first week of April, and you'll always have until about the first week of June to get that back to us. So if you can always make sure that it's on your calendar, maybe at one of your main meetings, you won't run into any problem with meeting our timelines. Um, on the orange sheet of paper, we have a list of denial bases, and those are the only things that we can really consider when we're giving an unfavorable or wanting to put restrictions on somebody's license. And those things include, if the applicant has a history of using alcohol or drugs to excess, that's something that we can deny a license for, it doesn't mean that they have to have a history of arrests for alcohol or drug-related issues, but if you had somebody that was an applicant that maybe had been charged with domestic violence, and it recited in the police report that they were intoxicated at the time, that would be an incidence of, um, using alcohol to excess. So if you're aware of things like that in somebody's past, that's information that we would definitely want to consider at the time that we were licensing somebody. Um, if the applicant makes a false statement to us, it has to be relative to something that we could deny their license for, it can't just be that they gave us misinformation on their application. If it's, you know, an address that they didn't list, we can't do much about that because we don't hold people to what addresses they put down. But if they forget to tell us about a conviction, that would be something that we would want to know about and could potentially be a false statement. Um, I'm gonna skip over local laws for a second, come back to that. The next one is demonstrate moral character. See, that's you get applicants who have lots of arrest records, but there are misdemeanors and violations and things we can't typically consider, but the example I keep giving is we had a guy who applied for a license, he had seventeen arrests for various violations and misdemeanors, and he had seventeen failures or appears, because he said what was going to occur, he couldn't pay the fine anyway. So then we look at him and we say, you have just general disregard for the law, so even though any one of those convictions alone wasn't enough to deny him, just the whole picture was enough that we could say he likely was not going to follow our laws and rules either, so we wouldn't want to give somebody a license. Um, the other thing for form of moral character is if you have somebody that applies, that has, um, received some sort of privilege by lying to an agency, a government agency, whether that state or local, um, welfare fraud falls under that, uh, receiving disability benefits when they weren't entitled to them, if you have any local programs where you guys help people out and they fraudulently obtain that, that would be something that we would want to know about. Um, back to the local laws, another piece of paper you have in there is the red one, and it's on time, place, manner ordinance, and I don't know if you have a TPM here? Anybody know if you guys have local?
I'm shaking my head, no.
No? Okay.
Roll the sidewalk stuff seven thirty.
Yeah. I know, I tried to go to my favorite candy shop, so it's.
We're still on winter hours right now.
Um, any, a time, place, manner ordinance is an ordinance that the city can put in place that will hold people, business owners, general residents, whatever, to certain standards, and that's zoning issues, noise issues, um, if you have a business that's causing problems and blocking the street because their patrons are parking their cars where other people can't get through the streets. Um, there are lots of different topics that can be covered in a time, place, manner ordinance, and so those are things that we can't usually respond to if somebody's got excessive noise or those types of things on their own, but if the city were to write them a violation for violating a local code, then we go out and give them a ticket for violating, uh, or allowing illegal activity. So it's a way that we can help local jurisdictions have the kind of community that they want and help hold people accountable for things that we can't just go out and write tickets for on our own. So it's something to consider, a lot of times smaller communities don't have them or feel the need for them, but if you were to have a problem bar or restaurant in town, it might be something that you might want to consider. I have a sample of an ordinance that's done in a city, um, up in the Portland area, they're happy to have me share that, so if it's something you'd like to look at, a lot of communities are doing it with the recreational marijuana coming onboard, a lot of people are writing TPMs for where those businesses can be and how they can operate, so I would encourage you, if you're gonna look at it for marijuana, that you might want to look out for alcohol at the same time. Um, the last denial basis that we really look at when licensing somebody is whether the business or the applicant themselves have had problems, and we call it history of serious and persistent problems, so it's not that they've had a huge violation record with us, but they have lots of little things, the police tend to be at the location often for fights or disorder or over-service issues. Those things can add up, and then we write them a violation for that history of serious and persistent problem. So if you have a business like that and you make sure that OLCC is receiving those police reports, that's something that we can help you, uh, use to maybe either not license somebody, or more likely probably put restrictions onto their license, so that they have to curtail their hours, or how much alcohol they're serving at a time, or how many glasses they can serve at a time, those kinds of things. Um, the things we can't consider are failing to pay taxes or, uh, fees locally, zoning issues, noise on its own, uh, for the type of entertainment, uh, often we get a lot of pushback from communities, they don't want new entertainment in their town, it's not something that we can deny a license for. Uh, we treat any form of live entertainment exactly like any other form of live entertainment, so if you let a bar have a band, we have to allow new dancing as well. Um, lack of parking, too many bars in a, in an area, I don't know that you guys have too many establishments except through the main street, so it doesn't seem like you have many in the residential areas, but that is something that we can't consider. If you guys zone it so they can have a business in that location, then we don't have the right to tell them they can't sell alcohol there. Um, the last piece of information I have is on license fees, and so when the legislature first put rules in place, not only did they allow for local governments to weigh in on liquor licenses, but they also set a fee structure in place. And it looks like you guys charge ten dollars a license fee here. The statute was written so that you could charge up to twenty-five, or you can hold a public hearing and raise your fees and charge thirty-five for renewals and a hundred dollars for every new application that comes in, and seventy-five for a change of ownership. So if that's something that you would like to consider doing, there's a process of holding your public hearing, you guys adopt the ordinance, and then you send that to us, we approve that, and then we, we're required to let all applicants know what your fees are, and so we include that in our renewal letter that we send out every year. So if that's something that you're considering doing or would like to consider to raise some revenue, um, that's an option for you, and that's addressed on your purple sheet, I think, on the left side there. Do any of you have any questions about our process, or?
I do have just one.
Okay.
The guidelines that are gonna be set forth for the, uh, marijuana, gonna be the same as the, the alcohol.
I have no idea. Um, they have not put rules in place, they just gathered the advisory committee for making the marijuana rules, and I believe there's fifteen people that were, um, appointed to that committee, and I know that that is something, my boss was meeting with the person who's in charge of that committee today, and so they will start having all of their planning sessions for rules, and I believe they're trying to have their rules in place and adopted by November. Um, we're not supposed to start taking applications until January of next year for outlets, so.
Well, I see that, uh, most of these rules for alcohol are, are, uh, pretty much, uh, taken for granted, that, that's what going to be as far as uses concerned, and there would be a lot of, uh, uses, uh, in, in the consumption of marijuana that would come along these same guidelines, so I just wondered how, so obviously it hasn't been decided yet.
Yeah, it hasn't, and I, at least at this point, it is not something that there will be any sort of on-premise consumption anywhere, it will just be retail sales, so it will be more like packaged stores or the, you know, the grocery stores, convenience stores where people will be able to purchase, but I honestly can't speak to the marijuana at this point, but. Um, if you're interested, we do have our website up, and you can sign up and get all of the information, any of you can go out and select what topics, whether it's liquor related or marijuana related, and they will send emails to you as things get decided or as rules come forward, so you can weigh in on those things, so.
Do they have a Facebook page?
I believe they do, I think it's on our website, so, I, I think it's all out there, communications people are pretty on top of that. Yes, sir.
Uh, I have a question, but before I do, the mayor's question is timely and appropriate, I get constituent questions just like that practically every day, uh, one this morning when I got a haircut. So, um, I, I think it's something that we really need to pay attention to. The other question I have is, as a new city councilor, we have a few of them here, what's been our experience in this regard, with this matter, in depot bay over the years, do we have any, uh, guidance there, or what we've learned, lessons learned, or anything like that, that, that might be helpful for the new councilor to know?
And that I can't speak to, I'm not sure that you've ever had any problem licensees in depot bay, and I apologize, Frank, um, I wasn't able to give him enough notice to come to this meeting, and he's also fairly new, so I don't know that he would know the history of your city either, but I think if you had problem places, there would be somebody in this room that would be familiar with those places.
I bet there would.
So.
Uh, so, I, you know, I think it's a fair question, just for the benefit of new city councilors. Uh, can I call you Sarah?
Of course.
Okay, Sarah, um, so, uh, this, it sounds to me, correct me if I'm wrong, it's that the state is really doing a hurry up trying to get in front of, uh, this, uh, medical marijuana line, and do I understand, is the OLCC gonna administer some of the, the regulations concerning?
Some, all I can speak to is what I know about the bill.
Sure, sure.
The bill is written that says that OLCC is going to be overseeing recreational marijuana, not medical marijuana.
Oh, okay, fair enough.
So the Oregon Health Authority has jurisdiction over medical marijuana.
I gotcha.
And so we, the bill got passed by voters, and so then it went to the legislature, and they are currently, there is a committee in place to tell us what we will and what we do and how they're going to enforce that bill.
Uh-huh.
Um, but it is currently OLCC and the enforcement staff that will be overseeing the regulation of the recreational marijuana, and OLCC will also do the licensing of the, the growers, the wholesalers, the retailers.
Okay, and this, this, excuse me, this is probably a question you can't answer, but they, is, I guess I, as a public, uh, looking, on the outside looking in, I would assume that, uh, as far as treating smoke, that, that we would treat, and I may be wrong with this assumption, that marijuana smoke, the same as we do tobacco smoke in public places. Do you, have you had any insight on that?
I would make that same assumption, but all I do know is the bill says you cannot consume marijuana in public. So it is not likely that we will see on-premise consumption, because that is a public place, therefore it will just be retail sales, and then people will use it wherever they can use it legally.
And I've, I've, I've had the experience, uh, your representative, uh, Frank, uh, what's his last name?
Matzko?
Matzko, the western gentleman, uh, very professional.
I've only met the guy once, but he seemed very nice, he was friendly.
He, he, he really is, yeah. I'm sorry, I wasn't here tonight.
Me too, and he truly is your person to contact, I mean, if you have any concerns with something or questions about, you hear that somebody's doing something they shouldn't be doing, he really is your go-to person, and he's down in Newport, and I can certainly send that information along if people aren't familiar with that, get ahold of him, so. Any other questions?
None for me, anybody else?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Very much, very kind. Sarah, thank you. All right, moving on, reports of officers, boards, or standing committees, the I L A, would be the San on the Enhancement Commission's reading.
Mr. Mayor, I'm a member, Mayor of San on the Enhancement. Before you, I, we have a copy of, uh, we, we have total cost for, uh, the builder, the guy who moved in, uh, total cost of, um, thirty-two thousand dollars, and, um, I'm. What I'm looking for is a motion of commitment and support from the city that you, uh, to do this, up to eighty-five hundred dollars, but before that, I want you to know that I could write this grant up and request all the money from the Army. Um, but I want this grant to succeed, and, um, the other end of it is, in the San on the Enhancement, uh, bylaws, you know, we were trying not to be a burden on the city, and all my time with San on the Enhancement, which has been quite a while, we have not asked the city for anything but in-time services for staff or something like that. So this request is, when we, we get this project, I mean, for those that are out of lines or whatever San on the Enhancement usually is, we try to be self-supporting, this is a big enough project that we cannot do it by ourselves, with the exception of turning that around and asking for the full grant amount, but again, after reviewing the grants, and the ones that succeeded, it looked like participation in that was the best hedge for success. And so, for you, it was my proposal and, uh, requesting the, the city for that eighty-five hundred dollars in, in funding for the project. Any questions?
Steve?
I want to just read, of course, what he is saying, I'm sure everybody knows that, uh, from the fundraising standpoint, for any organization, nonprofit, or the government, uh, community partnerships are very critical to, uh, success, so if you show part, uh, participation, the likelihood of, of, uh, getting, uh, the grant approved is, the percentage of that is much, much higher. And the likelihood of positioning ourselves for future, uh, grants is far better than that. So what he needs saying, from my own experience, years of experience on this subject, he's right, that's all I wanted to do is reinforce what he's saying.
So, um, you're suggesting that, uh, and we're gonna have a budget meeting on Thursday night, this is where we'll discuss that topic, all you need is eighty-five hundred dollars as for the match possibly for that grant, is that correct?
That's what, I need to write it up and get it in, uh, by June 5th, I want to write it up and have O F W review it from the Sigs.
Okay.
But, uh, we need that commitment to write that up, so we, we know where we're, we're going.
Do we need a city council motion to make that happen? Uh, Mr. Mayor, may I make a motion that, uh, the city put up the eighty-five hundred dollars and put it into the San on the Enhancement fund, and that is for, uh, you to get the application for a matching grant.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Second. Motion's been made, seconded, call please. Calling?
I, I got a question on schedule.
Can we discuss it, excuse me?
Pardon me?
Can we have a little discussion?
Discussion.
Forget it.
Go ahead.
All right, forget it. Come on, ma, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so I'm, I'm taking it that, uh, that it, that this shows that the city is, wants to be a stakeholder in, in San on the Enhancement, and this will show that, that this participation, if I understand you correctly, for successful grants, uh, shows, uh, should, the, the city, the city coming in with the eighty-five hundred dollars would, would show our, um, our, our desire, our participation, we, we become one of the stakeholders in, in making it successful.
With due respect, I would correct you to say the city is a stakeholder in this.
Right.
Project already, yes, and socially, economically, educationally, uh, this is just ongoing. Where we are in that state of affairs up there is, that structure needs to be, I would say, they won't let us do it unless it's, it's improved.
Thank you.
I have a related but unrelated question, it has to do, I believe it's either June 5th or June 6th of this. It has to do, I believe it's either June five or June six of this year. If I had young children, I, I have grandchildren that age, but if I had young children, I could take them down to Big Creek Lake on the free fishing day. I forget which day that is, but it's June five or June six. I was wondering, what is the possibility of us opening it up for the kids at N F K? Kind of for that one day and just do a little fishing to get them involved in the process up there?
It is very possible that I defer that to Brady. I mean, it's the city's, it's Newport's water source also that.
Well, no, I understand.
But it's how the city wants to view that controlled access. There's not so much the problem with the young children, it's the problem with the parents, to find out where the fishing is from. And this has become frequent.
I see.
I would, sir, I would think as great as that program is, I mean, like Big Creek is nice and flat and wide, you know, those reservoirs, our reservoir here is around, that would be a safe thing.
Brady?
I don't know.
I would refer to it.
No.
It's quite steep. I mean, if it's a handful of children and parents in life jackets, you know, you know, oversee and it's a scheduled thing, you know, it doesn't have to four. So, you know, pass.
One of the things that I've learned about this subject recently, and I shared it with Beanie over the weekend, is that other catcheries do have fishing safety for children. And they take them up to the Okon at least once a year. And it's a safety awareness project, as much as it is the fun and joy of fishing. So, it's an educational awareness type thing. And it's a safety. And I think that the more kids can learn about the safety of fishing, having been a kid that has fallen in the water and almost drowned a couple of times, and my brothers threw me in too and tried to drown me. So, if we, I just bring that up because it's true. And we need to teach kids safety. So, I would say that we could figure out a way with volunteers like myself, I'd be the first one.
Myself too, I'd like to be there.
I'd be the first one if you let me bring my fishing pole. And I would, at Neighbors for Kids, I can guarantee you, we would support that at one hundred percent, just like any other event that we have.
So, there's no economic, Brady, or Beanie, if we were to do that, we're not going to deplete the resource for the one day of the kids. We're not going to harm the resource that we have up there. Providing they follow the rules.
Yeah. The volleyball club used to go up there a couple of times in the summer years and years ago when I ran the water plant. And they had a parent or a guardian of some sort, a gorilla jacket and fish. Because there's cutthroats in there that at the time were really bad, they were eating small. So, to get the cutthroats out was the issue at the time. It was more of a try to get those under control, to save the smalls from release. Because this large cutthroat in there will not happen until.
There's weight.
Like the small ventures that were.
You were talking about going though, we're trying to get one of those.
It's one of the, whatever the free fishing day is for the state. It's in June, it's the first week.
That possibility, it exists, and it is helpful to thin out the cutthroats in there because they do prey on the salmon.
I just look at it as getting the kids up there and getting them involved.
And that's a side benefit. Right. But again, for the safety issue, we can, but we can make it work somehow.
Yeah. And they have the porta potty up there on the youth in clipping and stuff. So, if it's something planned and it's, it might, it shouldn't be too big, you really can't involve the public because it is a drinking water source and the health department is, you know, they're really shy on stuff like that. Because you're supposed to be really secure with drinking water.
Yes, sir. And I just have one more question, is, it's, that critical? What's our need?
How to say recreation, research. Right hand? You have a question? Well, I'm bringing that on here. It's, I want to say recreation and education. Yeah? There we go.
Okay, thank you.
Torrey, did you have something?
No.
Any other discussion? I'd like to say one thing in a slightly dissertation, as Sanon Clipping has been going on for some time. As far as I know, it's been so present, there hasn't been any problems. If we have supervision, I think that the whole thing would go down well. And I'd also like to see participation from the kids on in that as well.
Mr. Mayor, when they get those young people involved, they take ownership of that and problems go away.
So, we need, so we need to call a question. And I'd like to make a motion after this question.
All right, call please.
Mathelah?
Yes.
Gabino?
Yes.
Grant?
Right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes. And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a further motion that staff figures out what day, the month it is, which is going to be a Saturday, to open up fishing near a reservoir for just one day, that day, to the children of N F K. And providing that all the safety has been laid out and we do all the proper protocols.
And send a letter to the chair of Neighbors for Kids and ask them.
We'll just direct the staff.
Okay.
Doesn't complicate the motion.
And that'll, that'll go over very well.
Yeah.
All right, Beanie, seconded, any more discussion?
I think Steve's correct, we should direct the staff to seven hundred two N F K, inviting them to participate in the event.
All right, and what else?
Just to, you know, reinforce the point that Brady made about the secure drinking water. Make sure that we have the nod of the state on that. Nobody spraying W D forty on their doors.
Yeah, W D forty. I did ask them, what people do that, it's the flavor.
Potty to. Mr. Mayor, I can defer to staff for a minute. So, but all that, this is, I do have a motion and a letter of commitment that I can take in my grant application.
That's a good point. Along with the motion to commit the eighty-five hundred dollars for this grant application, the city typically would provide a letter of support. And basically, it would say, at the May fifth regular city council meeting, the council voted unanimously to provide support of this, and the mayor would sign it. So, if there's.
Do you have the ownership of that, you just do that, right?
If there's no problems, we don't leave the motion.
There we go.
If it's not a cover letter signed by the mayor.
Cool.
All right.
Gabino?
Yes.
Grant?
Right.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Mathelah?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Beanie.
Thank you. Want to, public comments? Yes, sir.
Evening, Mayor, city councilors. Bruce Silver, four twenty Southwest Cardon Street, Divo Bay. Good evening. Evening. I'm here tonight to bring to the council's attention the memorial wall at the north end of town on Whale Park. I've been on the budget committee now for a number of years, and I've mentioned it at that level, but it isn't gaining any traction. The issue is, we're running out of space. We have one section left, about eighty plaques, eighty open positions. And I had, earlier this year, I had city staff do a canvas of the plaques sold per year for the last seven years. An average is about eighteen a year, well, that's four years. And it's going to be bigger than a breadbox, I think, I think Brady might agree with me, that the metal I can speak to, the brass, the stainless steel brackets that these plaques are mounted on, that part of it's going to run three to five thousand dollars, just material and fabricating. It is, it uses the more expensive three-one-six stainless steel, and, but it'll last a lifetime out there. So, that's just a small part. By the time you get, we have property to the north of that wall that can be developed. But there's a lot of excavation and concrete that needs to be poured, as well as the wall itself. So, I guess what I'm here to just advise the council that if you want to continue that memorial wall that we provide here in the city, that you might just start thinking about it now. Because in my experience, when you leave something to the eleventh hour, it's going to be much more expensive.
Is this something that we should run through the Parks Commission?
Well, if the council would like, I mean, that.
Yeah, that would be one way to get started.
That was my question though. Mayor Silver, I've, you've requested this of the Parks Commission before?
I have talked to Bill Spores, I've talked, I've mentioned it at the last three years' budget meeting, it hasn't gained any traction. So, maybe they're waiting around to see what the city council wants to do. If the city council directs Parks, Parks to review it and come up with a proposal. I don't see, the point is, now we have time, four years, that's all I'm here to say. And I'm not an advocate of the wall, I've been taking care of it for the last ten years. But mounting the plaques, and sometimes they have to be modified because the castings get out of spec or something. I got to modify them in order to slip them into these channels. So, I don't mind taking care of it, it, that's what I like doing. But I think you need to direct the Parks to come up with a plan, if that's what you want to do.
Mayor Silver, would you be opposed to us querying the Parks Commission about this? And see what their take is on it and the proposals that they may have for bringing it up to?
Yeah, that's fine, Mayor, I have no problem with that. My purpose here tonight is just to alert you to the issue and bring the issue in front of you, that's all I'm trying to do.
Steve?
Mayor Silver, thank you for your community service, first off. And I do have some thoughts about this that are exciting. There's a larger discussion that we've had here in the city about the whole memorial with respect to veterans in the memorial that we have down at the park that we honor.
I'm familiar with that, yes.
And Brady and I and all of us have discussed that from time to time. So, we have a kind of a global conversation going on here. The Flea of Flowers is a very important legacy and signature event. So, what I'm suggesting is, I agree with the Parks Commission getting involved in this, but there's opportunity out there for funding beyond the normal ways that we do funding for this kind of project. If we do it under the umbrella of a part, a community partnership, like we've talked about for the step program. We can go for funding from private foundations. And if we have participation for a project like this, there's money out there for it. We don't have to just do, fund this thing one way. There's a multi-diversified funding strategy out there. We can't talk about it all night here, but I just want to throw out that there's money out there for projects like this, but we have to get ourselves structured to do it.
That's, that's fine. Like I said, my purpose is just to inform you.
Mayor Silver, I, I just, I just, shortly, just a little primer on, if, who, is it anybody that qualifies to get on the memorial wall, or do you have to have passed away, be a fisherman or a loss at sea?
I would defer to staff on that.
You have to be deceased. I mean, seriously, people, people have wanted to pre-order plaques. Well, the plaque has got your name and your birth year and your death year, so you have to be. But there's no, you know, only from Divo Bay or only died in the ocean, none of that. Anybody can purchase a plaque.
And the plaque going to have a little message like Lost at Sea? No, it just has to have their. And?
There's a. Yeah, there's a, there's over four hundred up there you can go review. It's basically date, birthday. Every once in a while, you might see a branch of service.
Right, that's what I was going to do, to show it, right?
Very, very brief, and that's only a bit fits because there's, there's a restriction on the numbers of letters that they give.
And are the plaques ordered by the city, or did you order it yourself?
No, you order it through the city, that's why I'm deferring to staff on how that's applied.
And how many are left? How many spaces are left?
Eight. And you're selling them at an average rate of eighteen a year.
I'd like to add one thing to that, please. I have spent quite a bit of time at that memorial, and I have, and from time to time, I pick heroes that are on there to write about. And I wrote about one, U S Navy veteran who sunk with the ship and is a real hero. I can't remember his name right now, but what I'll do for the benefit of the city council here and you, Mayor Silver, I'll send that article. But we have some real heroes out there who have died in battle, along with dying at sea as fishermen and all the rest of it. So, I think that memorial is pretty, pretty important.
That's, like you say, that's up to the council to decide, just alerting you that you're becoming finite. Anyway, and I'm happy to say, none of those plaques have fallen off in the last fifteen years.
Most of the applicants have.
We did have a problem.
Like I say, I'm going with you. But we had them down here at the Whale Wash Center, the glue kept running loose and it fell off the seawall.
One other thing on that, Mr. Mayor, is how much of the fee on those plaques goes back to repair and/or maybe renewing?
The fee, the fee the city charges is double what the city pays to have the plaque made. And that money is set aside specific to maintenance of the memorial wall or expansion, if you will. Primarily, yeah, maintenance and expansion.
But if it doesn't show up in the budget, then all of a sudden you're going to get hit with a storm sum, is what I'm thinking, and I'm concerned with that. Anyway, thank you, Mayor.
City councilor.
Thank you.
Good evening, Bruce.
Any more public comments?
Do you have a question? Is that something the council wants to refer to the Parks Commission? We can let them know to schedule it on their agenda?
Yeah, do we need a motion on that?
I think we just.
It's not necessarily, unless everyone's not in agreement. We can just, yeah, we can just let them know. Their next meeting is the twentieth of this month, so we'll ask to schedule it on that agenda.
Do they give us time, it's kind of a budget meeting, we need to do something.
Want to unfinished business? I'd make offer a gift of property to the city from Kirk Grenat. People be parting, honestly. The Grant family has spent some time offering this to the city. So, maybe any discussion on that matter?
I just, I, in my opinion, it's really, at this point in time, it, I think it would be unwise to the council to move on this offer. It's just because it would upset the, basically, the parking plan in Divo Bay. The parking's not going to go away because the Grants are committed in order to keep their commercial property active. And. keep their commercial property active and all the businesses, they happen to have that parking. First point. Second point, if the city takes it over, then it would and we would have to give special precedent to multiple businesses or to the actually to the property owner and give him special consideration that a lot of private property owners in depot bay that have commercial businesses do not have. And third, because he would, I mean, or the granite family would or is required that parking, so at this at least at this point in time, would it benefit or would benefit the granite family because they would be relieved of taxes on that property? And that would also bring another point is that it would be removed from the tax rolls for the county so that, you know, the aggregate of all those issues unless I think it just would be unwise for the city to proceed in accepting this gift or this offer, I will say, on the parking.
Steve?
I read that proposal over again and over again and over again and I've asked a lot of questions about it and I just can't see any benefit to the citizens of depot bay of getting that property. I just I can't find it in there, so that's where I am on it.
Jerome?
With respect to Jerome's opinion and with respect to Steve's opinion, the people that I work for are renters in that building. We have listed on our website since day one, which has been six years now, that parking pre-parking was available in the lot on the block behind our store. In addition to that, as I think I've stated before, sharing that information with my customers just simply through word of mouth and through social media that because in my experience, most of the people who come to depot bay and this is that anytime of the year tend to want to park more towards the center of town, which is where more, you know, the more well-known businesses are concentrated as well as some of the restaurants. And so the businesses on either end, I really can't speak for the South end because I, you know, I just don't observe that directly, but I know good on the North end. A lot of the businesses and business owners owners down there have experienced a lot of frustration because people unfortunately don't want to park in the center of town and walk, you know, all the way to one end or the other. They want to park near where they're planning on shopping. Now, over the years, we built things rich and strange into a destination for people who, you know, we entertain a lot of repeat customers who, you know, come to us and want to be able to park right, you know, near where, you know, where they're planning on shopping, not have to necessarily park toward the center of town or across the street or, you know, down the street and, you know, walk several blocks to our store. And so my opinion is that that parking is not only vital to the entire downtown because it does take more of the congestion off of the main street, but that, you know, in the future depot bay geographically, you know, we're kind of pinched on how we can this city can expand. And so putting, you know, developing more parking in an area that's adjacent or convenient to the downtown area where most of the business is concentrated, you know, I don't know if there's anything in the works or anybody's talked about that, but I just honestly don't see that happening. So I also do know some mitigating circumstances as to how and why the the offer is being made that I really have that liberty to share because I don't know if that's public information. So I'm not going to violate the confidence that I've not been given permission to. But I really think that this is something that that we should consider accepting. I know that there's variances that would have to be made because of the parking requirements and also because there's a private property adjacent to that whose only access to the public street is through that parking lot. And with respect to the other business owners in the downtown, I'd have to say that, you know, first of all, I think Jerome and I have discussed this outside of the meeting just a little bit in that that we need to make a long-term commitment to looking at the parking needs and parking requirements to reflect the the business structure of downtown as it is today and see if that needs to be revamped. But I personally would have to say, and this is just my own opinion, is that if any other business owner or property owner in the downtown area wants to make the city an offer that's similar to that, they're more than welcome to, in my opinion. I mean, you know, private people or corporations can do with their property as they wish. And if the city were to consider giving them some sort of variance out of consideration to that, I personally wouldn't have a problem with it. I would certainly be willing to consider it.
You know, this has been in front of us since, I believe, June of last year. Is that correct? Something like that. It's May or July, somewhere in there. And the granite family has made many different approaches and attempts to offer this property to the city. You know, I last week went out and talked to just a couple of the shop owners on the north end of the strip, asking them, what's your biggest problem? They first and foremost always say parking. And I was listening to Jerome. Now, I know I understand Jerome's objection because I think that's the one thing I have the biggest problem with, which is making an exception in the parking rules and providing a variance because what has happened before should be consistent, but we're considering to change that. And that's the only quondor I have about this because after going to these people and talking to them, talking to Joe, talking to Jerome, talking to people, Joe, parking is the biggest issue down there. And so I have not been proponent of this until just this last week. And I'd like to ask the staff, what exactly would have to happen for us to accept this gift with regards to the zoning and maybe some of the ups and downsides of that? And that's a question for the staff right now. Larry?
Andrew Castlers? Well, I was asked to take a look at this a few months back and I went through some previous approvals of Larissa Plaza and based on all the information I could I found, the the number of parking spaces required for the development and the number of parking spaces available, including all of those existing parking spaces in the lot in question, are essentially identical. So in other words, if any parking spaces are taken away from this subject lot, then the Larissa Plaza development falls below the minimum parking space requirement according to our code. So that's but so that's one thing. The the other thing that that I'm aware of, which which came up is the access to the adjacent neighbor. I know of that is actually an official easement that actually I think would lose at least one parking space. The other discussions that we've talked about is, you know, if that were a city lot, would there be opportunities for any other kind of facilities? And on one hand, the answer is yes, but there again, that would take away even more parking spaces than than we currently have. So the one thing that the the city has done in the past, you know, every property owner has the right to apply for a variance and we have had various applications to parking requirements. Some of those have been approved and some of those have not, most of them have not been approved. So so, you know, I sit here and listen about the need for parking and I guess just in my opinion is I'm not seeing how this would benefit the city overall parking aspects that are that are needed in the city. One final thing that I'll mention, just because I've heard this, this is in place too, is that I'm not sure if it's the the property owners, business owners, the residents of Larissa Plaza actually have easement agreements to use those parking spaces. So if the city were to take that property, there could be some issues there where even though it becomes the city property, they still could be dedicated or I should say those either business owners or residents would have for choice over those parking spaces. I don't know the details of that.
Steve was next. Steve? There's a larger issue here and we have an action item from our meeting, our joint meeting with the harbor folks a few weeks ago for parking development. And what I have observed as a new city council and I have learned is that the patchwork discussion can go on forever as far as parking is concerned. And we need to make a commitment as a city to do that overall parking development, if you want to call it a master plan. And that's where I'm coming from. I don't like the I'm not comfortable with this patchwork decision making.
You comment to that?
Yeah.
You know, the I can't tell you exactly what year, but probably at least ten years ago, there was actually a parking management study that was done, I think it was done through the Oregon Downtown Development Association and it might be time to pull that off the shelf and dust it off and.
Okay.
Likely see likely update it because there were, I know, recommendations in that plan and that would be like one component, you know. I think another component would be to look at other, you know, land acquisition and or, you know, additional parking places, but.
Thank you.
Larry, from what you said, you know, you say there would be no, in your opinion, looking at the proposal, there'd be no net benefit and it could be have quite a few maybe unintended consequences in my or I don't want to put words in your mouth. There could I maybe from my standpoint, there could be some unintended consequences in granting and in I mean, not granting, but receiving this this property into the city offers.
I'd say that's fair. I guess I just don't see I I agree, I think with all me, that there certainly are places where additional parking would be a benefit for depot bay as a whole, but for specific sections, and I don't see where this could be a benefit. There may be it could open up actual actually detriment in the overall number of stations.
And I just so if you if I guess I would see that it had it would have the potential of fundamentally changing the parking by taking this in and putting it as proposed requirements in depot bay. And I guess, Council, I remind you, I think we need to if we were to make any movement on this tonight, I think we wouldn't be serving the stakeholders that are involved, the current property holders in downtown depot bay by not giving them a heads up what the council is is considering. And I would just say that, you know, I mean, I guess by doing this, by, you know, in other words, this Larissa Plaza, if I understand correctly, is required based upon the businesses that are there to have sixty-nine spaces. If the city receives that gift under the conditions laid out, they would have, correct me if I'm wrong, zero requirements for parking. Is is am I understanding the way the gift is offered?
Well, it depends. You know, there's there's different ways that you can do it. I guess the, you know, one concern that I would have is is, you know, if this, let me go from two different sides. You know, if the city took this property and you have the twenty-five parking spaces, whatever that is, and that's opened up to be general general purpose public parking, you know, there's there's one argument that that takes away from the parking spaces that that were required by the Larissa Plaza development to have in place. You know, there's there's another side of it and, you know, Walport is an example where they created the downtown district where all parking, whether it's on private property or on-street parking, is considered general purpose public parking. So anybody can park anywhere. One of the reasons they did that was they have, you know, based on a study that was done, they have an abundance of parking spaces. Not everybody would agree with that, but but it's it's true. I'm not sure that's the case here.
However, something that just for me just throws a huge hitch in all this works is that for years, that's been a Larissa Plaza parking. It's been owned by the granites or whoever in conjunction with Larissa Plaza, but it's always been hosted public parking. How could we do that if three quarters of that at least was required for Larissa Plaza tenants and customers? Technically not public parking, and I believe those public parking signs came down, if I'm not mistaken, once the LLC was established.
I have a little knowledge of that. Referring back to the parking study that was done several years ago, one of the things that came out of that was a push that that asked for owners of private parking lots to open their their lots up to to the public. And the majority of the property owners that owned those lots did that at that time. And I'm sure I think there's still some of those signs around, but when that first happened, there were quite a few of those, you know, the whale tail signs that said public parking.
Right.
I think they said public parking.
Isn't that confusing even more?
You know, I don't know, I, you know, I agree that, you know, when you want to go to a shop, you want to get as close as you can, but, you know, you look at all you look at our precious parking on Highway one-on-one, you know, between Bradford and the bridge and, you know, I don't think any of us want to see any of that parking go away. And that's, you know, general public parking for, you know, kind of the first step first served. Maybe there could be some regulations on that, but maybe maybe that's not such a good idea too, but it can apply to the private.
Joe was next.
I have a few points that I'd like to make. First of all, I wanted to know, okay, so the lot as it is currently configured, which is a recent configuration from what I understand, because I, you know, I'm there three days a week at least, if not more, four days usually, but a lot of times lately I've been parking out front. So I know that they have reconfigured the lot. Did they lose any spaces in that reconfiguration? And in conjunction with that also, the current easement that they have for the property adjacent to that has was part of, you know, there was no parking spot that was designated that was left clear for access in the previous configuration and it has been also left that way in the current configuration. So I don't know that we would necessarily be losing a spot if we granted that easement, but I would like to hear what your point is. Um, so I don't know that we would necessarily be losing a spot if we granted that easement, but I would, would like to hear what your point is or your, you know, what your, your take is on that. Um, and I'll let you answer, but I, I'm not quite finished yet.
It, it, and certainly, yeah, if that, if that access was originally granted and, and parking space wasn't lost, then so be it. And that's, that's fine. I, I completely agree with you. As far as for the, the recent reconfiguration, I, I can't answer that. I, I don't know.
I'm, I'm just saying in my observation, the current configuration, um, it appears to me that they probably lost some spaces in changing it from a, uh, to, if you see what I'm saying, the way it is now. But in that previous configuration where they had a, a berm down the center and spaces coming out off of either side of that in the center, there were also two parallel spaces over on the side, that, that next to that property that were in constant use, but there was no approach from all the driveway. The driveway was still left clear. Um, what I would like to say is that, um, as it sits now, if, you know, if the ci- if the city decides, and I personally, I would love to take some public input from especially from the business owners and the people who actually use those parking spaces and who are going to, going to be impacted directly by the fact that those spaces are, you know, if the city decides to do, to take no action, um, either now or in, in the near future, um, those public, those spaces are going to be sitting empty. And I know from my own personal experience of being there every single weekend for six years, that on the weekends in the summertime, that lot is packed. I'm lucky if I could, you know, I as an employee could get a parking spot in there so that I could go and open up the shop for the people, other people that were parked there to come and do what they wanted to do. And, and I, I very strongly believe that that would be a, a huge detriment to the businesses on the north end, um, which are, some of us, you know, have not been there quite as long as some other businesses. So we're still building and growing our clientele. And, you know, we can, you know, I'm, I'm just saying if, if, if things continue this way, that lot's going to be sitting empty for, you know, for this whole season. And, you know, that, I guess, that's why I would like to take some public input, um, especially like I said, from the business owners on, on that end and the people who are going to be directly in, in, in my opinion negatively impacted if we allow that lot to sit empty.
I don't, Jeff, I have, I have one final comment on mine. Um, this, I have been so on the fence about this issue because of the issues around zoning and, uh, set precedents and changing the game, as Steve said, all this. But I know that this has been going on since June, at a minute of last year. That means it's almost a year old. I, with all due respect, Council Fisher, I believe at this point we have discussed it and we have beat it to a halt. And if we're going to make a decision tonight, it should be a final decision to let the Grannets know we're going to take it or we're not going to take it. We can't keep stringing them along like this, nor should we spend, with all due respect, much more time on this issue because there's other pressing issues here in the city. So that's my two cents on that. I think you're on the top. You want to give a motion, you know?
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll second your motion. I have the, just one more thought on this. It's a question, Mr. Mayor. What do we have to do as a city council to launch parking development study, get that one out of the closet somewhere and dust it off?
Well, let's just do that. Sorry, this motion, but, yeah. Let's just talk about that one after.
Okay.
I, I, I've been patiently waiting to have a little discussion, so I think it's my turn. I'd be more than happy to hear your motion. Um, Deep Bay, as you brought up, is, uh, really needs parking and we need it sorely, especially after one-on-one or ODOT went through and took a bunch of spots away out of our right of way. Uh, these people have, uh, as, uh, Zeke brought up, have offered us that, uh, parking space to us now several times. And, uh, I think that, uh, that the fact that, uh, Deep Bay needs parking a lot more than, than worrying about, uh, whether it's right or wrong at this point, uh, I, I think it deserves merit to, uh, to accept this property. So, in that happy mood, if there's any other discussion.
Steve?
It sounds to me like there's a moral responsibility here with this, uh, question as well. In, in other words, uh, there's a business issue and there are all these other issues, but I pick up from you, Mr. Mayor, there's, there's a little, there's some moral responsibility on, on the part of this city, uh, to accept that, to offer. Is that, is that the way you're feeling, Mr. Mayor?
No, you're putting words in my mouth. I'm saying that we sorely need more parking in this city. And if there's any morality to it at all, by accepting that, that, that parking area, that, that would be the crux of it.
Okay.
So, no, it's, uh, it's only for the, in my mind, the good of the city to accept that gift. So.
I mean, I, I, I'm trying to pull the mind of counsel here. I mean, I, if we want, I, if, as, uh, I am, I'd be open for discussion. I would, uh, make a motion to respectfully decline, uh, the offer by the Grannets, uh, to the city based upon current parking, uh, regulations within the city. Uh, do, do not allow it. I would second that motion.
Is there any other discussion?
I do have one thing I'd like to say. Um, I think it should be borne in mind, uh, as we consider our positions on these things, that, uh, if the city doesn't take advantage of this, this offer, uh, which I will not characterize, um, it is entirely possible that the Grannets would then, because they are title holders to that property, could turn around and sell it to another, you know, someone else.
And then there'd be a violation of, of zoning.
It is private property though. I mean, and so a- as such, you know, just saying that that, that is a possibility. I don't know if it's an active possibility.
Yeah.
However, it is a property.
Mr. Mayor, part of the discussion, I, this does not cut off what Counselor Sparks suggested we make up parking issues. This, that, uh, Count, uh, Council President Zeke, uh, Olson mentioned, and, and, and I agree that we need to give the Grannets at least an answer right now on, on, yes. And, uh, uh, as far as, I'll, I'll just give you another scenario as far as parking and who owns what downtown. I, I would declare that I own parking downtown. Um, if we had a free-for-all kind of thing where it was like all of a sudden any business, uh, could, uh, bring the, uh, exception that was made if finding under these conditions, taking the ground, parking under their conditions in the city and bring that as a precedent to the city, it could result, I mean, in the scenario, you know, in a hyperbole scenario, that, uh, a free-for-all, uh, of businesses wanting, uh, uh, to, you know, to, to have parking, I mean, ways based upon this decision that they're, under the current regulations required to have, that could result in, say, somebody like myself taking some yellow tape and taking off my parking lot that right now is being used by the public and literally choking downtown businesses out because I want to have my parking, you know, for my, my, my people. Uh, if it becomes, in other words, if anybody can start any other kind of business and, and have a precedent of parking the way it's set up, you know, based upon a favorable decision to the Grannets, which it could, then I think that at least in the, you know, it, it, it could fundamentally change the, the parking within the city. And I guess, uh, that's why I made the motion. In the short term, I'm, I'm, I'm not willing to open that door. I think that it's worth more discussion and more involvement with the stakeholders in the city. And I'm in agreement, there's a serious parking, you know, issue. It, it's not just with Deep Bay. Uh, we're a microcosm of, of cities, um, around the U.S. that have downtown areas like we have here with thriving businesses that we want to continue. And that's all.
Gold question, please.
May I help, excuse me? May I have a repeat of the motion?
Um, this is what I have. We, uh, move to respectfully decline the offer by the Grannets due to the current regulations in the city.
So yes, please, no.
And I, I, I'd second that.
Yes.
Gold, please.
Grant?
Aye.
Fisher Brown?
Yes.
Sparks?
Yes.
Olson?
Reluctantly, yes.
Mapala?
I'd say no.
Gambino?
No.
And it's a tie vote, so the motion fails.
Thank you. Um, may I go ahead, no? Again, going back, um, to the Grannets and, um, them having so generously and diligently offered this property. We need to do something here. Um, either we schedule it for their vote in another council meeting or we open it up to a public discussion like Joe says, but the Grannets need an answer one way or the other. And we just gave them no answer again.
I, uh, Council President, if I may, if, I, if, I mean, if, if there's going to be another motion to put this up, I, I would beg the council to, um, publicize this and bring the other state. This has, I mean, this has got, um, more far-reaching, uh, implications, uh, if there was a, if we took in this granite property based upon their conditions, then would affect Larissa Plaza. Okay? Um, and I think that the council owes it to the rest of the property owners that have, uh, that are in compliance to, um, to, to tell them what we're up to here.
Yes, sir.
Um, I disagree. I'll tell you why. Uh, and I've said this before about other issues. This is a public agenda. It tells you and it tells the public what's going to be discussed here. And in every meeting, there is public comments. And invariably, when we get to old business and new business, we allow a public to discuss frequently. If it's a real crucial, uh, subject, then we limit it to two, three, maybe five minutes per person if the place is packed. This is posted in several places throughout the city, each and every two weeks. And that is, that offer of granite property has been on, I'm going to say five or six agendas now, posted. To, to put out, to put out a notice, a public notice now, and you got to post it in the newspaper and you got to pay that money and you got to put it up two weeks in advance of any need to tell people what they already know.
Um, Mr. Gambino, I would respectfully, uh, offer Sid, uh, a, let's say, maybe an eye-opener for you.
Mm-hmm.
I, um, uh, property owner on both sides of the, arguably one of, I'd have to look at the, uh, largest commercial property owner in Deep Bay, John Widmark.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you. He doesn't live in Deep Bay. He lives short, short ways away. Do you, would you, I, I would pose the question, do you think that we, um, on a decision that would fundamentally change potentially the zoning that could affect his property in Deep Bay, do you think that we owe him at least the chance to comment?
Obviously, it's a rhetorical question. No.
We don't, we don't, we don't owe that to him?
We owe it to him.
We don't owe it to a private property owner?
Certainly, we owe it, but we're doing it.
Okay, but, but, Mr. Gambino.
I made my point. You're arguing. That's fine.
The, the point is, is that as far as private property goes, that people can live all over the United States, indeed all over the world, and not be here. I'm just saying there's stakeholders involved here, okay? And, um, I mean, what, what would you say to some of the businesses, like businesses in deep, let's, uh, let's, uh, say Rich Allen, who also owns property, if, if, uh, that leases property to the city for parking? Would he, you know, would, do you think that the, do you think that Rich Allen is, is aware of this? I know that he's not. I just had a conversation with him the other day.
What are you going to say, Joe? That's my opinion. I gave it out. That's my, that's fine.
One, one more.
One more and then we're going to move on.
Okay.
Here, here's my take on it. Now, I, 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 I'm not agreeing with anybody here. There's only one thing that's important to me, is that we've got to start looking at things in the context of what Larry Lewis and others say about what we need to do with global planning of, of parking and stop this short-sighted, uh, uh, one, one-for-one decision-making. I see the implications of, of, of this parking issue. And this one decision right here is a patch for something that is a bigger problem. And I encourage the, and beg the, the council to think about the global requirements of parking in the context of this decision. That's all.
Thank you. Um, item B on this unfinished business is land ac- acquisition of what? There's a piece of property, um, Shell Avenue there that, uh, we've been trying to purchase now for, uh, more parking for the city. And it comes under the same context as, of the granite property. So, uh, what we've been trying to do, everyone is to increase our parking, uh, availability to the, to the city. Now, uh, it was, uh, I believe it was you, Steve, and, uh, a couple of meetings back that you brought up the thing about parking.
The park, the, uh, parking development issue?
Yeah.
Overall, yeah.
I totally agree with that. And that's what this evening is all about.
That's right.
And, and at some point, we're going to have to get with the planning commission and, and Larry Lewis and figure this thing out and, and get more parking. And however it comes down, if we have to change the parking values for a business, then that's what ultimately will have to happen in the future. We've only got so much ground and the cars aren't getting any smaller or no less, uh, the amount of them. So, this, uh, I want to move on to land, or, uh, item B now, this land acquisition. And, uh, Brady has some notes on it.
Yeah, I'm Pur- I'm Purdy and I kind of checked in on, uh, I really don't have the numbers, but it's, uh, Linkin County assessed value of this lot. Uh, are you referring to this lot here, the, the, the lot down, uh?
The one down, uh, the bottom of the shell?
Bottom shell. It was, uh, the Linkin County assessed value was fifteen thousand, six hundred.
Something, yeah, a little over fifteen thousand.
Yeah, a little over fifteen thousand for that. And it's located between where the Jim Bob is and, uh, the condos. It's that strip. It's, it, it has a little bit of an incline, um, but it would be, uh, it would be an area that could probably be leveled off and could pack it and, and for trailer, trailers to get some of the trailers off the highway. It's, it's kind of the lot lined it.
Does that property fit one-on-one AM Shell?
No.
No.
It's down by where the Jim Bob is. There's a hillside there. It's about a Bill's Brothers home, his residence is, uh, right there. There's a house where we crossed from the whatnot shop. There's a home down the long strip below that.
It fronts one-on-one or fronts Shell?
It fronts Shell and overlooks the Harbor. It's just at the end of the Harbor parking lot where the condos are, between the Jim Bob and the condos. Jim Bob's out of Danielville.
Oh, it's directly west of the, the Bullhorn's ramp.
There's new condos there.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Joe, just one question, I was, go ahead, I'll take the last few.
The property description. And has the, and has the property owner contacted?
Yeah, it was offered, the city, the city was interested in it about a year ago and it was brought to the city council and at that time they were interested. So it's kind of bringing it back on the table now and.
I mean, the connections of the front.